Liberty and Justice for all.
Mr. Watchel.
Roll call. Toth.
Here.
Dorff.
Here.
Echol.
Here.
Marquette.
Here.
Bruce.
Here.
Heben.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the June 13th, 2022 Regular Council Meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes of June 13th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the June 27th, 2022 Regular Council?
Mayor, we're going to add ordinance 2022-35, and I guess an executive session at 7:00 a.m.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, committee reports. Do we have any this evening? All right. Reports of the mayor and administrator. Allison, do you have anything this evening?
Yeah, just really quickly. The first ever Citizens Police Academy will be happening here in Rossford, and it'll take place September to November. It's one night a week, and if you're interested, there's information on the city website. A promo with the police event is going on right now over at the high school, and that will continue until 9:00 p.m. tonight. And the work on the crossroads roundabout is scheduled to begin next week after the holiday, so there is a detour, and I have it so that you can see it. The detour will be if you're coming off of 795 and you're coming down the parkway, you'll go around to Nature's Lane, and then you'll hit Sportsman's Drive, and then you'll go to Bass Pro and back down to the parkway. So that is scheduled to begin next week after the holiday. That's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
We have some special guests tonight. I think everybody knows Mr. and Mrs. Ball, the Bumgardner family, and I know everybody knew Mrs. Nancy Oberdorff. She was a legend and iconic in this town. She was a wife, mother, grandmother, and an educator, and she touched a lot of people's lives here. So, Mr. Oberdorff, can you join me?
Sure.
The Balls would like to make a donation to the Rossford Beautification Committee in honor of Mrs. Oberdorff.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Larry. We went to school together.
A couple of years ago.
Well, him and I were waiters at the first last, First Supper?
Right.
I think it was. Last Supper. It might have been the first or last one.
Appreciate it, Joe.
What I think about Nancy, and I think about growing up, and my sister was one of her best friends, and of course, I was friends with her.
Sure.
I didn't know you that much. This young guy right here, or fellow, he was a preppy kind of guy.
He's still ahead.
So I was, yeah, yeah, look at him, yeah. So, but anyway, she also was a teacher here in Rossford, and my children attended her classes. So it means a lot more to me that Nancy be recognized as a person, and she always told me that it takes a village to raise a child. And I look around here, that fella, kids look up to him. Stuff that he's done when he was younger even, kids know him, you know. So Chuck Durachak, he coached soccer.
Absolutely.
I coached soccer with him for 12 years here in Rossford. These people have an impact on young people. And so what I'd like to do is that I believe that the Rossford Beautification Committee, they put on their Facebook page that they had eight flower beds that weren't completed. And so what I propose to Neil Armstrong or Neil Diamond, the mayor. Okay, I know who he is.
I know you're just saying.
Is that he put me in contact with this committee, and my wife and I will take them on a shopping spree for $500 to get all the stuff they need to complete our city.
That's awesome.
Flowers and so forth.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe, very much.
And I'll see you at the old folks' home.
Okay.
It's happy hour.
Yeah, right.
Jerk off, produce, half off.
Awesome. We're gonna, we're gonna dedicate a bench. Okay. Us in the schools.
Good man.
Correspondents, Mr. Watchel.
I have one piece of correspondence. It is a request from Esco Hospitality LLC, doing business as Stabridge Suites, Toledo, Rossford, Perrysburg, 9749 Clark Drive, for a Class A liquor permit. I just need to know if council has any objection. I believe Class A allows them to sell beer or wine on the premises.
The chief says it's okay, Bob. Chief?
Okay, that was it, Mayor.
Okay, introduction of ordinances.
Motion to go, motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel.
Second.
Heben. Negotiations. All those in favor of going into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Not a vote, just the petitioning, I couldn't hear.
Labor negotiations? It will be out for...
2-24 is an ordinance adopting the estimate of revenues for the city of Rossford, Ohio, for the period beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023. This is the second reading.
Allison, we want to do this this evening?
We would like to, yes.
Suspension of the second and third reading?
Second. Anybody in the audience have any comments or questions in regards to this passing this evening? No?
All those in favor of suspending with the third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Does this need to declare an emergency? Move to declare an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption?
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt 2022-24. Echol?
Aye.
Oberdorff?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-29 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-29 is an ordinance authorizing the administration to dispose of certain surplus property not needed for any municipal purpose and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Chris, or go ahead, Robert.
Go ahead, Mr. Russett, your committee.
No, I just had a question. I mean, normally, we have auction site or whatever. What do we do in this case? Is that, is there something special we do on its firearms?
They're, those have been in our inventory since the early 90s. They're not really practical anymore, but they are machine guns.
Right.
They can only go to people that hold federal firearm licenses. We're kind of way, we, we looked at the auction site is specific for guns, and they can, they can only give them, or they can only sell them to those license holders, but we don't think we can make as much money as if we sell them to another governmental agency, and that's the only people they can go to is basically governmental agencies. So, and we have four of them, and they're not really practical for us anymore, so we just want to try to make some money out of them.
Chris?
Move to suspend the second and third reading.
Second. Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare 2022-29 an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt 2022-29. Heben?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Oberdorff?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-30 by title only?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-30 is an ordinance to approve collective bargaining agreements with the United Auto Workers, UAW, Local Union Number 12, administration staff, and declaring that emergency. This is a first reading.
Ms. Marquette?
It's only because it's not stated on here. Well, what's the terms of the contract?
Three years.
And what percentages?
Five, three and a half, three and a half.
Five, three and a half, and?
Three and a half.
Beautiful, thank you.
Okay. All we need is a motion.
Move to suspend the second and third reading of this ordinance.
Second. Is there anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No?
Vote on the motion to suspend with the second and third reading. All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Move to declare 2022-30 an emergency measure.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt 2022-30. Oberdorff?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-31 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-31 is an ordinance authorizing the administration to enter into a lease for certain real property owned by the city of Rossford and declaring that emergency. This is a first reading.
Allison?
Yeah, this is for the tower, and I, at your desk would have been the options that they presented us. I don't recommend passing this tonight. We should do some more investigation into this. It looks to me like we'd be better off to stay with the lease that we're currently in. It expires in 2044, but we will continue to do more research on this unless you guys really want to pass it tonight, and I would suggest no.
First reading. Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-32 by title only?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-32, an ordinance amending ordinance 2022-23, which authorized the administration to supplement the 2022 budget and piggyback on the city of Toledo's consortium of local fire departments for the purchase of radios for the fire department from Motorola Solutions from state term contract number Ohio STS 573077-0, in order to realize savings and declaring that emergency. This is a first reading.
This actually, you guys already passed to order these radios. The issue is that we left out the Section 3 in that ordinance, so we needed to amend it so that includes that Section 3. It doesn't have to pass tonight because we've ordered the radios, but we need it to include that Section 3 because there was the radios, there were radio holders, there were all these things, and one of all of that stuff was not included in the state term bid. So in order to make sure we're doing everything correctly, then we needed to add this Section 3.
Go ahead, Chris.
I'll move to suspend the second and third reading.
Second.
Anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt 2022-32. Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Oberdorff?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-33 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-33 is an ordinance for transfer of funds for the year beginning January 1, 2022, and ending December 31, 2022. This is a first reading.
This is the transfer from the general fund to the capital improvements for the money for the purchase of Dog's parking lot, in addition to the additional funds we needed to appropriate over for the street projects that are going to happen, the drainage projects that are happening this year.
Do you recommend this to be passed tonight?
Yes, I think Kelly would like it to be tonight.
Move to suspend the second and third reading of 2022-20-33.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Since there's no mention of emergency, I would move to adopt.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt 2022-33. Oberdorff?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-34 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-34 is an ordinance amending Supplementing Number 3, the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January 1, 2022, and ending December 31, 2022, passed by ordinance 2021-78. First reading.
We'd like to have that tonight, too. This is actually moving the money into the budget because it wasn't originally budgeted or not in the exact locations that we need it now.
Move to suspend the second and third reading?
Second. Go ahead.
On both this one and the last one, I should acknowledge, we had finance meeting Friday afternoon. I just didn't get our meeting minutes done, so.
That's good. Anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, is there a motion to read ordinance?
Oh, got it adopted first.
Move to, we need to declare this an emergency. Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt 2022-34. Echol?
Aye.
Oberdorff?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-35 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-35 is an ordinance authorizing the amendment of the zoning map of the city of Rossford and adopting a new zoning map of the city of Rossford. First reading.
This is the Buck Road Mandel site. This is for Panatoni to go to the next phase and do their plots and get buildings up.
Needed to be passed tonight?
Yes, please. And this passed, this passed the planning commission also.
Okay, move to suspend the second and third reading of 2022-35.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it?
Louie Bauer, do you have anyone in the room, please? Doesn't this require a public hearing? If you're going to approve a recommendation of the plan?
I think we've, I think we've already posted that and had the public hearing at the planning commission meeting.
There was a public hearing on, before city council on it?
It was at the planning commission that passed.
Pardon?
At the planning commission.
Yeah, but before council?
That's what we're doing now.
Was this published as a hearing?
We've already, we've already done that.
City council, I'm talking about. That's not the planning commission.
Because the planning commission goes to city council, and we're about to pass that.
Okay, was this advertised as a public hearing for the changes? For city councils action?
I'm not sure what the question is.
Let me set this again. Was this advertised tonight, for tonight's meeting, as a public hearing to accept the recommendation of the planning commission to resolve this?
This isn't a public hearing.
There's not, there's, as I understand, I could have it wrong. I've not looked specifically at this particular issue, but I don't think that's required. I said, we had the public, we had a public hearing at Plan, Plan Commission.
Yeah. Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience has any questions or concerns? No?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt 2022-35. Oberdorff?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read Resolution 2022-16 by title only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-16 is a resolution authorizing the city of Rossford to use new guidelines for indoor air quality, IAQ, as it pertains to city projects and declaring that emergency. This is a first reading.
City projects or city facilities?
It says projects. Brenna, I know that you are interested in this one. Maybe you can explain more. I'm not really familiar.
Yeah, so this is basically a resolution to be able to evaluate indoor air quality within city buildings and to, this resolution essentially enables us to apply for a grant to be able to do all of this, and so it will come at no cost to the city. And it basically just ensures that the people with the proper certification are the ones doing the work, and then also authorizes us to enter in, or to apply for that grant.
Great idea.
Go ahead.
What if we don't receive the grant money? Do we still have to? I mean, I don't understand.
Can I make a suggestion? Because I think the intent is there. I mean, I think it's, what Brenna's trying to do is, is there, but I'd like to just have this go to committee to the next meeting? I mean, unless you guys don't want to, I mean.
Is there, is there a governing body that has indoor air quality? Is there responsibility at the EPA, or is there somebody like the EPA that has that?
We have Ohio Revised Building Codes that we, that we have to go by.
Who was it?
Ohio Revised Building Codes that, that we as a municipality, or even if we were a private entity, we would have to go by.
Now, I'm just wondering if there's, there's, there's a body that oversees indoor air quality.
I know air quality has EPA, but I'm.
Yeah, and I, I looked at this and tried to find out exactly what those standards are, and it was, everything that I could find was, was all born out of the EPA regs, but I, I couldn't find out exactly what the indoor air quality requirements are. So somebody probably needs to figure that out.
Yeah, well, let's, let's vet it, and we'll revisit it, and, go ahead, Caroline.
Are they governed by OSHA?
I, I don't think so. Everything I could find was EPA, but I, again, I, I just looked at it this afternoon when Kevin and I talked about the agenda.
I know the outdoor quality is EPA, but this is to.
Go ahead, Chris.
Is two more readings enough time for facilities committee to review, or should we table it pending their review?
Well, we're not, we're skipping the last meeting in July and the last one in August.
So you got.
So should we?
Probably a month.
So a month? I think that's plenty of time.
Yep. That's fine.
All right.
We can have Corey come in, too, to the facilities meeting from Local 33. If you guys have particular, specific questions, Corey can come in and help to explain this a little bit more. The way that he explained it to me, as far as what to do if we don't get the grant money, I don't know. So, yeah, that's worth looking at.
What, is there a grant we're applying for, or this is kind of to build a foundation?
It's, yeah, to build that foundation. Once we pass this, then we're able to apply for that grant.
Gotcha. All right. Everybody good with that? Okay, since I already spoke, I just want to say I wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. And now it's council remarks. Mr. Toth?
Read right what the mayor said. Everybody have a good Fourth of July. Happy birthday to Mr. Heben.
Thank you.
Happy birthday tomorrow to Mrs. Toth, and that's all I got.
All right. So Oberdorff?
Happy Fourth of July. Hope everybody has a good Fourth of July, a safe Fourth of July, and also happy birthday to my colleague over there.
Thank you, Mr. Heben.
And I'd like to take this time to thank the Ball family for the grateful donation of $500 to the City Beautification Committee in the name of my wife and also.
We got you.
Happy birthday, Mr. Heben. Happy Fourth of July. And can I move the Public Safety Committee meeting up to 3:30 on Wednesday instead of 4:30? Does that work?
3:30?
Yeah.
Is it posted for 3:30?
Well, we still have a few hours to get it posted for 3:30. It's posted for 4:30.
I just want to make sure we have it this.
Yes, right.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yep.
Chief? Thank you.
Mr. Marquette?
Nothing.
Mr. Bruce? Mr. Heben?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing for me.
All right, audience remarks. Anyone in the audience? Maria, come on up. Just, I think this is your first rodeo, so just say your, your first and last name and your address.
Maria Milligan, 9546 Mandel in Perrysburg, but I'm renting, you know, a spot at the Marina at West Wall 50. So I, I, we've been Marina member for three years, my husband and I, and we love the Marina, and we hear such great things about the Marina, how back in the day it was this, it was, has a happened place, it was fun to be at and everything. And so with the approval of all of you, I want to thank you for letting me do the food trucks, and I was hoping to expand into like a tips-only band, maybe once or twice a month. My husband and I are also, we have the setup that we're trying to figure out the final of having like a movie night there. We have karaoke setup that we're working on, so we want to turn it into a place to be to at least get the people off that sandbar and bring life to the Marina. So I guess at my, my first, you know, after the food trucks, I'm thinking about, you know, a band. I've one tentatively sent up because they're like, oh, no, we have to bring it to the council, and I wasn't aware. But I have The Frogs scheduled to come in on the 8th? I think it's the 8th. And they're a steel drum band. It's from like 6 to 9, and I just wanted to verify, see if it's okay, or do I need to cancel them and just stay with the food trucks?
The answer is usually always yes. We just need to figure out the infrastructure and liability and things like that, but I, I'm.
You're paying for tips.
Yeah, no liability, not, not financial liability. No, I appreciate what you're doing, and I've heard a lot of positive feedback, so. Thank you. Chris, go ahead.
I think it's fantastic what you're doing, not only for the boaters, but also allowing other people in the community to come down and visit the food trucks. I think it's great.
Yeah, Debbie and I have gone down there a couple times.
Yeah, Debbie and I have gone down there a couple of times. Great idea.
And then this coming weekend, we're going to be pretty packed, or I have like two each day. I think it's two, or, no, I have three ice cream and the swinging leaners, go ahead.
Gotcha. Go ahead, Caroline.
Thanks. I wondered who was spearheading this, so it's nice to meet you and great ideas. Thank you for doing that.
We're, we're here to help you and support you.
Yeah, just let us know.
I just want to double check and make sure everything's got to do.
We try to find reasons to say yes and not no. Not a lot of bureaucracy in the great city of Rossford, huh?
Can you advertise when you're going to be down there if this gets going? I mean, can you let, make it like in the, the Rossford record so people that aren't boaters know?
I have a, there's a Rossford Marina Facebook page. There was one that was made a few years ago that kind of died. So I made a new one that says Rossford Marina. So you just go on Facebook. Because I did, um, thank you to Toby for giving me the lock to that one, uh, what you call it, that one billboard. But no one read it. So I was like, people are always on their phones, people are always on Facebook. So I made the Facebook group and on the poster, I'm put like up the pictures of the food trucks that have come so far. You know, it says, thank you for visiting the marina. Just something little.
Well, Roger LaPointe's right behind you from the Bowling Green Sentinel and we'll get you with Beth Church. So, thank you. Go ahead.
Can we list the food trucks on the sign out front?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why not? Anyone else?
Yes.
Go ahead, Louis. Yeah, go ahead. I'm, I'm sorry, hold on one second, Louis.
If, I mean, if it gets to be more than like the steel drum band and should they coordinate with Allison or?
Every event they have, every event, every food truck, yeah.
Well, I have a, I'm sorry, I have a running Excel sheet that I send Allison every, like Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah, right, you got it. Go ahead.
Quick question. It's been over two and a half years ago since you ordered your long range land use plan. And it was supposed to be done in six months from that date. Is there an update? And it was a half a million dollars of taxpayer money.
Yep.
What's the status?
Allison, do you know when they're coming in?
The first, the first council meeting in September.
When?
The first council meeting in September.
In September?
Mm-hmm.
Why was delayed, you know?
Because of me.